Good evening. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health being held in the Town House Auditorium on August 26, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conference technology. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is anyone else recording the meeting other than ourselves? Kristin Rivers from New Wilbraham Hampton Times is recording. Thank you, Kristin. Good evening. First item on the agenda is August 1st, 2024 minutes. This was basically a discussion of the Gary versus Hampton self storage lawsuit and the judge's decision. Sorry, refrain from commenting on it this time. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Next one is the August 7th, 2024. Again, this was about the Hampton self storage. It was a special meeting.
Interesting. I don't think I've ever seen that type of reference before, Don, with motion in play.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Accurate, but I don't think I've ever heard it described like that. Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the August 12th, 2024 regular meeting.
Definitely not the Arial font. This is more the Times.
Right. This was the VFW turkey shoot. For those of our guests, no live turkeys are actually hurt during the turkey shoot. Planning Board clerical help. This will vulnerability award. Ford and Burgess lease, which will be on the agenda for tonight. Fall town meeting discussion, discussion on previously voted town meeting articles. Shared energy manager contract we signed or agreement we signed and one day liquor license for the senior center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Fire Department.
Hey.
So let's start with the brush truck.
Brush truck is still, I'm still being told it's on schedule for to be the chassis to be delivered the first quarter of 2025. I spoke to him today again. He, I said, how long once, you know, the chassis is received about? He said typically like six months because, you know, they have still some supply issues and stuff. But he said, once the chassis is there, they'll be able to set up better deadline of when, you know.
So do they bring it to that dealership where you bought it from? Is that what they do? This chassis goes there, then they put the rest of it together?
Yeah.
It goes to the outfitter, right? After the dealer?
It goes to D O, delivers it to the company that's building the truck. And then they customize the.
Generator?
Well, our current truck is working fine. I mean, it's no.
Right.
Okay.
Right for the brush, brush season, correct. The generator, it's not funny. I don't know why I'm laughing. So I guess, working with Brian, closely with Brian, I think we're going, I've seen emails today, and Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to reach out to three electricians to try to move this forward a little quicker and get the quotes correct. We do have to have, because the electrical inspector wants stamped electrical drawings on this. It requires more involvement from Paul engineering. They're going to oversight the construction, the pad, make sure the materials being used are, you know, appropriate for their drawings. Also, he said that he'll have to amend the drawings a little bit because there were some changes being made and some things being done. Now, the highway department has graciously agreed to board the pad with my help of, you know, laying it out. The fire department will be responsible for getting rid of the disposal of the old generator. And then we just have to move the electrical. He has an electrical junction box inside the shelter that's there now. I want it away from the building, out of there. So he just has to make those amendments, the drawings. As soon as I receive those, I'll solicit the three bids and see if we can get this moving.
You said the electrical inspector is requiring stamped blueprints?
He's requiring stamped electrical drawings from Paul engineering.
And you got some potential warrant articles?
I asked Brian for three placeholders. It's down to two. The first one, our squad is taking water on in the fuel system. And we had a maintenance tech come from our company, and he says, what's happening is when we fill the water tank that's in the truck itself, the overflow empties right out onto the diesel tank that's in the truck. And the tanks are known have problems already, I guess, rusting out. So that's where we're getting water into our fuel system. So I had that company quote it. I had another company somehow quote it. And then Ford, I asked them, they just finally sent an email today saying they can't bid on it or they won't bid on it. So I have my three bids for that. It seems like the lowest one's around $2,500 to have that done. I really wouldn't want to take that out of my budget if the town meeting, you know, a special town meeting is available for this or what?
I don't know. It seems like kind of a low amount. I mean, you have money to cover it, which might run you short at the end of the year, and then we'd have to do some transfer.
Mm-hmm.
But right now, Don, it seems like this is very similar to what we saw with the emergency expenses last year, the dog officer. I don't know if it would. When you have enough money to cover it in your account, I think the same thing the advisory always says, we'd like to see you get close to expending it and then come back in the spring when at that point you're actually running short. Secondly, your point, is this a defect that people know about? Because you're saying the, it sounds like something that.
I don't know if it's a defect. I mean, a truck is, you know.
A design flaw?
It's 2001, so it's when you're.
It's a New England flaw.
Yeah. I don't think we could, there's anything that you could.
No, I'm saying, is this something that's been known for this type of model where potentially?
I think the tanks, the top of the tanks, I guess, are, but like, there's a winter salt and road salt.
So it's a corrosion problem?
Yeah. When I worked in the dealer, John, you'd see lots of F series trucks come in with, you know, salt and sand, and the tanks would rot from the top down because of all that corrosion that just builds up over there. It's just inherent in the New England and the design, yeah.
So if we, so just so I understand this correctly, if I spend the money, run out of money in my budget to carry out the year, I just come see Brian and say I have a problem?
Well, I think at that point, I would think the board might go back to advisory and say we need a reserve fund transfer at that point, but, you know.
Okay.
I don't think it qualifies for an emergency right now because you have plenty of money in that maintenance account.
Got it.
If you run out of money, you'll just have to trust us.
Yeah.
There you go. Or that bake sale thing you talked about.
I totally trust Brian.
And the other one is what? Is that the tiles, the asbestos tiles?
Yes, asbestos tiles, abatement for asbestos tiles. I gathered three quotes for that as well. The building committee going through all the reports that we obtained on the building assessment, especially one particular person on the committee really feels like that's a major safety hazard and wants it, would like that area shut down immediately, but we can't, we're still functioning on that building. So it does need to be addressed, and that was one article I'd like to.
How much is that?
The cheapest we have is $10,995.
That's unfair.
We'd also have to hire a hygienist a month or the air for the abatement. Abatement's going on, that's around 650. And then obviously we'll have to air concrete after we're done, so we'll have to seal it at the minimum. I'd like to just make a note, I think it's worth making this note, that even if we were to do something with that building, you know, tear it down, this abatement still would have to be, be done, so.
But right now, we're talking a placeholder, so you'll have specifics later. I mean, you'll tie the money down, could be 10,000, 15,000 by the time you get into abatement, et cetera. Could be more.
The engineer we were working with had said to agree to not, they don't want anything to do with hazmat stuff, so they'll be taken care of for any next steps that even happen there. The other thing we were talking about when the building committee was, during the abatement process, the fire department would have to go somewhere for, I think it was what, four to five days possibly, while the tiles are being taken out?
Yeah, we would be responsible for emptying the rooms. So it's the front radio room, it's that little kitchen, it's like, I don't know, five by five area, and then the meeting room itself. All have nine by nine tiles, which are known as asbestos tiles, with the black mastic on the floor, which is as well. So they would come in, remove all that, the black mastic, grind the floors down, and leave us with clear concrete.
Don, do you think that's something, I mean, if it's prospered through a week, is it worth looking into bringing in, I'd say like a construction trailer or something, to sit down next to it, you know, to the north of the building and just run the office operation out of that?
That was one of the ideas the committee kicked around. The other idea is if it's going to be short term, maybe, you know, since they're in close proximity, maybe they could work out of the Melville room for a few days. It's an option to save money.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like you say, you know, the office there, jumping right over to.
Right. I get it, yeah. Couple, couple minutes.
Yeah.
How much is office trailer rental?
I don't know if you know from U S or anything. I mean, you must have construction trailers up there for different projects.
We do plan abatement up there, but we don't have a construction trailer. We just move them to another building.
And?
The third, third item was for new gas meters, but I think I've resolved that issue with Craig Rivers. We're going to use the MEMA grant on those to replace our gas meter. We had a gas meter, it's provided by EverSource for a long time. They've actually calibrated it for us. We bring it over to L and D plant over in Ludlow there, and they calibrate it for us every two weeks. But they have stopped using that particular model throughout their company, so now we're, you know, looking to change to a different meter, sometimes a four for us, when we thought we could replace it, but the calibration, gas and setup is like $7,000, and that's not, that's not in our budget to do that.
And there's no place else, other place around here that does that type of calibration? Once EverSource stopped doing it, it's?
I don't know anybody else that has that meter or the setups for it. If, if we ran into, which was nice about that is we could show up there and they'd do it right there while we waited. So if we bring anywhere else, probably have to, oh, leave it, we'll check it over, and oh, we need this, we need, you know, so we need to keep it in service as much as fast as possible. So we have a good idea of what we want to do, and with the cost, I think we can get a couple, and have one on each truck that way as well.
And that's a grant?
The E M P G grant.
Yeah, I think it's $2,700.
Yeah, roughly around 25, 27. That's not due until, well, we have until October 30th.
We should have all paperwork due tomorrow.
And how goes the building committee?
Building committee, they're scheduled to meet, I think, maybe two, three weeks out, I'm guessing. They're not, all right. So they do have a fee letter from an architect. Brian, I think it was emailed to you this afternoon. So we have to get a contract with them before moving forward, I would assume, if I correct.
The town meeting already voted this money out, right?
Yeah, the money's been appropriated, but we still need, I think we still need a legal contract.
The rest of the meeting, six million bucks, they haven't even looked at it yet.
I'm not saying it anyway.
Right in the middle of the, right in the middle of the three to 17 we heard before, right? Yeah. Let's not include the elevator, Don.
The fire.
All right. Anything else for the chief?
Can I say a few things? You guys are great. We did, kind of exciting, we did get our first application for our cadet program right this week, so. And I have two new probationary firefighters applied recently, so we should see them in a week or two coming before you.
Good.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Carry on. The police department, bulletproof vests.
I'm going to give you a status update on our bulletproof vest program.
Okay. Go ahead.
So the bulletproof vest program, 50% of the bulletproof vests are paid for through the Department of Justice usually through a grant that we apply. 50% is applied through the state. And so as I looked to replace three bulletproof vests recently, I noticed that our line, we have a line item that's set up in the town that's, the money gets deposited through the state, through the Department of Justice when you file for the grant. I noticed we're short minus 1710, which would be the state's end, or for three vests would have been state's end of it. So my understanding is, as I dug more research, state, depending on funds that are available to the state, will give a reimbursement when you apply sometime throughout the fiscal year. So that is expected to come. So we show a negative of 1710 in there right now. In talking to Cliff, the town accountant, he said that's not a great idea to keep it in a negative, and other vests come up, we might go further into the hole. But then, when reimbursements come in, we go the other way for a positive. He said that previous years, the auditors have talked that it's not a good way of doing things. So I did a little research with other departments, and number one, finding out in our patrolman's contract, it's a contractual obligation, that the full timers have a vest through the town. I also believe that our part timers should have a vest if they're working on a road just as a full timer. So what has recently happened is I've applied for five vests with the grant program. Around February, the Department of Justice comes out in the application process, you apply. I knew that I'm up for a five vest coming for this fiscal year, July 1 to June 30th. I'm in need of about five vests. Well, now there's another, close to four more vests, so that'd be nine vests altogether. I thought it was eight when I sent you guys an email, but it looks like it's going to be nine. So it appears that through the Department of Justice, I've applied for four, I mean for five, and if the state comes on their end, depending on reimbursements, they would reimburse as we move forward. In talking to other agencies, knowing it's a contractual obligation, they've suggested, you know, what they've done in their department budget is, when I come up into my budget, I apply for how many vests I know that are coming. And if that money gets reimbursed upon funding from the state, great. If it doesn't, then it's the obligation that falls on the town. What I've gone back and done some research, it appears that Department of Justice through federal, federal portion has always paid their portion, and the money's just rolled from '21, '22, '23, '24, there's monies in there. The state hasn't paid since 2021, apparently. I just asked for more state funding. Now, whether they ran out of money, not sure, but I just applied for three vests. My dilemma that I have currently right now is I'm coming into fiscal 2024, this fiscal year that we're in, and I actually need nine vests. So I'm asking for maybe a suggestion or thought is going to the town, to the special town meeting and asking for, that money's to be for it to amend my budget to allow us to get the vests. And the way the vest works is, the vest is good for five years. This happens to be a big year for our department because nine vests, that's including part-time officers and in full time. Moving forward, looking to, if the money comes, gets reimbursed, great, or just budget it in my budget each year whenever I need vests. I mean, this is a big year. Next year, I'm looking at two vests to get replaced. And the vest costs, right now they're currently 1140, $1,140.
Of which half is reimbursed?
Usually half is reimbursed through the Department of Justice and half is through the state. I haven't received a reimbursement from what I went back and looked at since 2021 from the state end of it.
Have you looked into that reasoning yet? Did they just say they're not doing it?
It does say, it does say in the process that depending upon funding.
Okay, so, but there's no denial of that yet?
No, I don't, I, so what I just did is these most recent, the three of them that I just got, I just, I just applied for reimbursement. So I haven't got anything that I got denied or not denied yet. All right. It's a new avenue for me going into the state of how to reimburse them. I don't know, we can maybe ask Brian, have you experienced, is there a denial that you get if you don't get it, or you just don't get it deposited into your line?
The new, okay. The new vests you're talking about, when you say part time, you mean the reserve officer?
Our reserve officer, correct.
Would they be qualified to get reimbursed?
Yeah, so it does say full timer, retired, part time base officer.
Okay, is part time, is reserve the same as part time in the Fed's eyes?
Yes.
But this is a change to what we've done in the past. We have not provided vests in the past.
No.
We've had reserves.
We've always provided vests in the past.
For reserves?
I understand for reserve.
Because you were just saying earlier, this is something you want to start doing, is giving the reserves the part timers' vests.
No, no, I feel as though they should have a vest when they come here and giving them. As far as I know, Chief Farnsworth always got a vest for full timer or part timer, and the reimbursements are for full time and part time. I just want to continue doing it. What I'm saying is there's an obligation to our full time officers in the contract.
Yeah, right.
So, so one could say, well, there's an obligation to the full timers.
Is it the reason the schedule is so far off, is it because of hiring? When you talk about a five year vest life.
Right.
But for some reason, we have half of them up right now.
Right. You know, I think a part of it, I'll be honest with you, had a lot to do with, a lot of this fell on Kathy, did a great job with it, and I have it color coded, and I found the color coded, I showed Craig the color coded chart that's there. Myself and Julie have realized where we're at, and we are short in this upcoming year. I did apply, like I said, I did apply, and I should know in October for five of the vests if I'm going to get reimbursed on the Department of Justice side. So what will happen is, five years and one day, when that officer goes, gets his new vest, I'll have an invoice, and I'll have the serial numbers for that vest, and I submit to the state end of it. Then I look to get reimbursement on the state end of it.
So we're looking pretty much to just cover the account so we don't draw a negative until the reimbursement comes in?
That's what I was thinking, unless there's another suggestion, you know? I mean, I don't know, I mean, we had talked about, right now that's where I'm going, because from, for this year, I'm in need of nine vests. Could have five of those nine reimbursed.
Right, but the reimbursement money typically wouldn't go into the general fund. It would go into the police fund.
It goes into our bulletproof vest fund.
That's right. So the general fund would be funding these, but they wouldn't be getting the money back if the grant came back. This also done, to be honest with you, is similar to what Chief Poolum was talking about. We don't have an overdraft to really go against here. And there's a pretty good likelihood, and I think the chief has done a good job of talking to his, you know, cohorts and other departments as well, we should reach out to the state legislatures, let Richie Neal know how come we're not getting funded back, and have a better sense of when that's going to come back. And this to me is an annual thing. We're not overdrawn. We probably won't be overdrawn. And Scott, I know what you're saying, it's a different account, but it also gets back into, we're not at the point where you're running out of money.
Right.
And we have a pretty good, I think, with your efforts and the state association, our efforts, whatever, we're going to get that money back. I just don't see it qualifying for an emergency at this point. I'm happy we're aware of it. I think he can expend it from another account he's funded for at this point. And if it comes close, we go to advisory and say, look, we got to make this up because he's got to go out and buy. Two rifles failed, he needs that money back in that other account.
Is this something that should be a line item for future budgeting?
Well, the problem is because he can't.
What is the account you have now?
Right. It's at least an account for one or two every year.
Yeah, but it's supposed to, technically, if they did the reimbursements properly, how much would be out of your pocket, Scott? None? If you got the reimbursements from the state and Fed?
None, right. Account that Cliff has and through Dick that did set up for the bulletproof vests.
Which technically shouldn't cost the town anything, should if they held up their obligations like they should.
Correct.
Right, yeah. Not the first time the state has not met.
Been a lot of that recently.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm asking is, does this show up on that, right, does this show up on that sheet that Cliff gives us? Is this a separate?
Four of them are not going to be reimbursed.
Well, they haven't been reimbursed yet, and they haven't said they're not going to.
Five will be reimbursed, but four definitely won't be, right?
Well, five, we put in for the reimbursement through the D O, for the Department of Justice and for the state. I can't put that reimbursement until I, until actually the vests get purchased and utilized. That's my expectation. But a total of nine altogether.
And all, all nine will be reimbursed?
No, a good portion of them.
That's.
Why not? Why wouldn't all nine be reimbursed?
Because I have a new reserve that missed, I didn't put in for the new reserve. There's two new reserves that I didn't put in for, wasn't able to put in for.
So they wouldn't be reimbursed in the following year? Or they never would be reimbursed?
They probably wouldn't be reimbursed, right?
Why?
Well, I mean, I can put in for it, and it could fall into the funds, but, you know, it falls into that fiscal year. We may see, we may, I could put in for it and get the reimbursement, sure, but we're running into that negative further and further and further with hoping to get reimbursed. So I didn't know if there was another way that we want to do it, because obviously the auditors are telling the town accountant, what we're doing right now currently isn't the best practice. So do we change it now, knowing what I know now and become aware of, or do we just continue to hope that we're going to get reimbursed?
So you're going to get 50% back for the five?
I'm hoping. I should get 50% from the Department of Justice. I can guarantee I'll get 50% from the state on the five.
Which we got to look into. But you've been running that, not back from the state for the past three years?
So 2021 was the last time that I saw a reimbursement that came in from the state from us that I went on to the web.
Was that also the last time you put in for reimbursement from the state?
Yes.
So you haven't put it in the last three years?
I haven't put it in.
Have you not bought for the last three years?
I haven't had to.
Okay.
So that makes, that's.
Well, so we don't know.
That portion of, if it's going to come forward with the state.
Right, because if we haven't put in, we don't know if they're reimbursing in other communities because we haven't applied. We don't know.
No, for that, but what I was, where I was going more with that is we're showing the negative now, which wasn't a good practice at the beginning. So we can continue to wait, and since we're talking about it, do we continue to wait and go into the negative?
Well, we also, you know, maybe talking to the chief in Islam Meadow, Wilbraham, hey, did you guys get vests last year, and did the state reimburse their part?
Right, and so I have done that. I have done a little research, and they have gotten their reimbursement. But just go into that negative way about it, which I.
It's not like we're overdrawing about 100,000 here. We're talking a few, 10.
We're talking 10,000, $260.
If we were to, yeah.
10,260.
Yeah, but the federal reimbursement.
The federal reimbursement's more likely than not, so it'd be half of that probably would be. That, that would be, right.
Might be something to see how it shakes out.
Yeah, just let's, just see how it shakes out. All right, continue on.
We appreciate, we applaud your practice. I like the idea that you're talking about the reserves get protected as well. That's good.
Absolutely.
Different businesses to sponsor the vest or something, I don't know.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always nice to see you.
Always nice to see you.
When not, without having to show my license and.
And registration. Put hands behind your back.
Every department head with their hands out today.
The sincerity of all this is breathtaking.
What's the next department that wants money? Step up.
MVP contract. That's you.
Yeah. Mark here. All right. Mark. So we've talked about what the board wanted to sign this contract or not.
So we've talked about what the board wanted to sign this contract or not. This would be for the final design and permitting of the Main Street Bridge over Eastbrook. It's not going to require any cash match. It's going to require, I think, $11,000 of in-kind match. It'll keep it, at the end of the day, it will have the project fully permitted and shovel-ready. So that's the question before the board, whether they want to accept that, the MVP grant application, and finish that work. Sound about right?
Good.
And the project requires replacing the bridge?
Well, I mean, if you're going to do the project, yes.
I mean, that's the goal of this, this latest grant.
Yes.
Yep.
And the designs that have been prepared and submitted are designs for a complete replacement.
Which they're not paying for.
Correct.
Well, we're not sure how it's going to be funded at this point.
Does accepting the grant obligate us to replace the bridge?
No.
Does it do anything for us, getting the grant, if we're not going to replace the bridge? Does it help us, if we talk about the repair and upgrade of the bridge, does doing this grant help us in any way there?
What was the premise? Sorry?
Okay, so if we take this grant.
Yeah.
Is there any part of it, if we weren't going to go with the whole nuclear replacement thing, and just go with the outer beam repair plate type thing, which is much less than a new bridge? Is there anything in the grant that brings us closer to that repair project? Is there anything useful in what we do in the grant? Or is this grant just another opportunity for, basically, an outside provider to make a little more money from the state?
But if we, if we just repair the bridge, then we have an 80-year-old repair bridged instead of a new bridge.
Of which the state has not told us the bridge needs to be replaced. Like the other two bridges, they came hard to the town, said, hey, we want these bridges replaced.
Correct. And a lot of that, I don't know. I'm choosing my words wisely here, so a lot of that depends, I think, in part in what program you may, the town maybe entered in, and how that program kind of operates. I will say, like, with South Road Bridge, that wasn't, to the best of my memory, like a forced replacement. It could have been a rehab, a rehabilitation or repair, depending on, you know, the engineering or consulting firm's assessment and recommendation. And I think to this day, like, under the small bridge program for South Road, I don't believe that that's going to be an absolute full replacement. I think that is going to be, you know, more of a rehabilitation, which will have a better idea. I think next week we have a meeting with them. But back to Main Street. You know, with the legwork that Howard Stein and Hudson is doing right now, it's possible that we could use some of that Chapter 85 preparation, and some of their design preparation, for the replacement of the two deficient beams, outermost beams, and, you know, perhaps new wing walls, and kind of like a rehab. But we wouldn't know, I'm sorry.
No, good, good.
I was just going to say, I'm not sure we would get a straight answer from Howard Stein and Hudson. I mean, I'm not sure that we would get a straight answer from Mass DOT Bridge Division either. My thoughts are, and I think I might have said this before, is perhaps getting a second opinion from another engineering firm. But again, that's going to be, that's going to come with a cost.
But I thought, I thought the reason, their whole reason for replacing the bridge was for flood mitigation. Basically, they were concerned about the fact that there wasn't enough capacity with the old structure if then another flood event happened like it did in '05. And that was their impetus for replacing the bridge. The deficiency of the bridge, they never addressed from a repair standpoint, because repairing it would not, would not take care of the capacity problem.
Correct. And that brings me back to the type of program that you're entered in. This municipal vulnerability program is kind of, you know, like, climate change-driven. So with that being said, they want to, they want to, they want to put a bigger, you know, a bigger bridge in with more capacity and.
The barrels that are on the bridge now?
Yes.
What are they, the purpose that they serve?
So the purpose of those barricades, those are, now, those were forced upon the town by Mass DOT Bridge Division. And the, the purpose of those is just to keep somebody from pulling off. They want, they don't, they want those two end beams, beams one and beams 10. They don't want any, any weight on it. Not that they're dangerous, they just don't want any weight on them. So that's what, that's what those barricades are there for, to prevent, like, a tractor-trailer truck from pulling off into the shoulder or something like that.
What is their ideal solution? They obviously want, are concerned about the outer beams. Have they come over and said, just fix that and be fine? Or, you know, what's, what's their game plan?
So the last I heard from, according to the last latest bridge inspection report, there were a few concerns. Beams one and 10 being one concern, the wing walls, some scaling on the, on the abutments, and rail, rails and rail bases. So all repairable. I mean, all, I mean, it doesn't, that's from the state. But now, if you're talking about MVP and the type of program that is, they're going to want to see more capacity, maybe a little bit higher, maybe a little bit wider, so on and so forth, so it's, it's.
So in order to figure out the best course of action, MVP is only going to tell us that they want us to replace it with the biggest and best, greatest thing? I think that's underneath the program. If we were to go through an actual engineering firm and follow the guides of the, of the DOT?
Yes.
Then it might be a different.
I believe it, I believe it would be.
Okay.
I'd get to find a, 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 a bridge construction company that will even come out in, without, because they're not engineers, right, do the work, and even give me a rough estimate. So that leaves us to, and the other thing too, that we're not sure of, is if you need a totally separate Chapter 85 for, and Brian, you might know, for a repair as opposed to a complete replacement. You could say that if you had the complete replacement, then you could cherry pick some of the specs for the repairs you want to make, but you couldn't do that the other way around.
Let's think about this logistically. That bridge is a main artery through town.
Absolutely.
What's the length to replace that bridge, time-wise? Is it months out?
I was asked, I thought that was asked, or I wanted to say it was a two-year.
Two years, I thought they said.
Oh, that's what I heard on the conservation, yeah, yeah.
Are we closing the road down for two years?
One lane, they would do one lane at a time.
Yeah. They would set up temporary traffic signals.
Yeah.
Remember how much they were? It was like 100 and something thousand for the temporary traffic signal.
A repair, still probably be in the two-year range?
That I can't say for sure. I know the two-year range, and just, just by watching the conservation, conservation meeting, has to be that, they said 18 months to two years because of certain conservation restrictions and.
I don't think a repair, let me just ask Rick. You recall the repair of Summers Road Bridge? And we had to, I think, weld some stringers on it or something. That wasn't, that didn't take a year to get done. I think they came in, they lifted it, they welded.
No, it didn't take a year. And again, we didn't shut the bridge down to do it either.
Right. And that was kind of, that was a repair job. That was basically.
Pretty significant repair job, it was, you know. Yeah, so no, I, I mean, again, I'm no engineer, and things change, but I mean, we didn't go through that much hell of a deal.
So by accepting this MVP, signing this contract, we can't have them engineer a repair, right? Because they want replacement only?
Henry Steinhudson.
They want volume.
The scope of this, like Mark referred to, it's the program that it's in.
Okay.
They're really focused on climate change adaptation. And so, yeah, a repair would not increase the volume of water that could go through that bridge.
Do we have a volume of water issue through that bridge at the moment?
Once every 60 years, yes.
That bridge handled a bigger volume of water than the '05 storm back when the, when the dirt pile gave way up on Glendale Road. It was way more significant that went through there in '05, and it handled it without any trouble.
Right.
Well, it wasn't any trouble. The water was brown all the way down to the Connecticut River, but I mean, it handled it.
Rick, and you recall, a lot of it was backup water, because the Scantic had a problem, and the water came back from the Scantic. Not that it was coming down through Laughing Brook.
It was a combination of that, the Beaver Dam that went over Mountain Road in Wolverhampton, that let go during the same event, and then triggered the, basically a landslide, the property on Glendale Road where the guy had the horse farm. So all that came at once through that bridge.
Is that right? What year was that?
What you're asking, your dad and I were together, I'm going to say, '93, '94.
2005?
I don't know if it was 2005.
Your dad and I, it was, it was a guy named Cadet's Property.
Race track, yeah.
Yeah, the guy with the racehorses. And all let go at the same time. Because he had stockpiled all the stuff, the debris from the farm, and farms out there.
I'm just saying, I think some of their premise with this is.
I think the process is overkill, but that's, I'm no engineer.
I mean, I do agree, and I think we heard this from Gary, the mitigation of the Scantic. It's too bad we can't use the MVP towards, I think Gary talked about that, well, the silting in, the mill pond problem. If we could target it towards that, there'd be a lot more benefit to the town from that. You know, because we.
When I walked around the Scantic about 15 years ago, took all those photographs, the biggest problem, and there's actually dams on the Scantic that are not man-made and not created, well, technically created by nature, because they have lawn chairs and everything else in them, and they force the water over by Tad's house. That water didn't used to go there, so if you could get rid of half the sandbars in the river, you'd probably be way better off anyway.
Right.
But again, I don't want to get you guys out of it.
No, but that's, that's better mitigation than talking about what's happening there.
And I think Gary had alerted the HSS, HSH team to, to that.
I think they have, they have an agenda.
Well, that there may be, you know, other things going on downstream here that, yeah, may or may not have contributed to. And same in the, in the future, that may or may not contribute to a future flood.
Right. So back to the first question, though, our obligation here. It's great that they talked about awarding a grant. Is it a grant that will benefit the town in hand, but in a real positive way?
In my opinion, yes, and here's why. You have a, you have a, a bridge design that's at 100% for a replacement bridge. And once it gets through the Chapter 85 reprocess, and through, pretty much through CONSCOM already, then you'll have what I would consider a shovel-ready project. So that if federal or state funding become available, and they're looking short-term for projects, that might be something that they would fund. I think that's the advantage right now. And the, the cost to the town is really in terms of in-kind match.
Okay. And it does not obligate us to say, okay, thank you for that shovel-ready, you have to put the shovel in the ground or not.
Correct.
You still have that option.
Yes.
Right.
But we have the.
Yeah.
The avenue for potential funding from somewhere else, if we go through this way.
Correct.
There's possibility for more.
So it could be a tip project, it could be, all right. So like I say, as long as there's not a gun to our head to do something, we're fine. Although another example of potential state money that could have been used for a better purpose.
Yeah, I, the town headed down this path, I don't know how many years ago, with the, with Henry Steinhudson in selecting this. I, I don't know what led to that, but, I mean, in future rounds, the town's not obligated to focus resources on Eastbrook, or on Eastbrook and Main Street.
I do recall hearing the other night that, that there are a couple time restrictions, and I'm not sure if that refers to the grant itself or the conservation portion of it, but it was like a three-year, maybe a three-year something, we'd have to go back to conservation or something like that.
Well, Craig, I think in three years, they probably can find that water pipe, right?
Yeah.
All right, we beat that one to death. Can we have a motion?
Need a motion to accept the grant or sign?
Yes.
Move that we accept the MVP grant as presented. And authorize the town administrator to sign the contract.
Take a second.
Fine.
The motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, town meeting. Now we're in town meeting? Yeah, we're on town meeting.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Oh, the boxes came in.
Mark. When are we going to go to the streets? Don't go, wouldn't.
I'm looking at the second week of September.
Want to make sure I'm out of town. All right.
You're going to be the free traffic detail guy. We're going to save some much money.
Always out for the run and hide approach.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're waiting for the vest.
They hand me that?
All right.
Yeah, we'll find a guy.
So we got a, we got a town meeting coming up. We want to do electronic voting. What do you think?
What do I think, or what do we think?
What do you? It was a group thing.
Okay. I did send you the information I had. I've actually talked to some clerks, and those who are for, are for it, and those who are opposed are, forget it. It is extra work, and then, and anyone has had it. The clerk itself, herself, himself, doesn't actually control the. I guess there's some work that's involved in that during the meeting itself, and it's more of a distraction than it helped with the clerk. So there would have to be someone secondary. Usually, I do try to have someone secondary there, so that could work. The cost of it, on the other hand, we're looking at about, for 200 clickers, and that normally would be sufficient, but the last few meetings we've had, we've topped 200, not by a lot, but. And you want to make sure you have them, and they are something you can rent. But just to get 200, and the cost was about $10,000.
That's that we buy it, right?
If we buy it, yeah. I think we, we, Brian had mentioned that we, he might think about trying to rent them first to see if they'd even work out. And I can look into something like that. They do rent, but they're expensive to rent.
But they send somebody to, right?
You have to, I'm sorry?
They send somebody to run it, if we rent?
No.
No, we'd still be on ours?
If you buy them, they send someone the very first time to show you how to do it?
Yeah.
If you rent them as far as, and this is just from the three that I've dealt with, the three people that offer these. Nobody says we'll send someone in there, they're just sending the clickers and say, here you go. Yeah. And some instructions. I mean, they're not going to leave you a call, but I guess they do have some telephone advice if you need it.
Craig, your other concern before was the Wi-Fi, right, that we have to make sure that.
Well, that's something I thought about too, but I thought the school was in pretty good shape as far as.
We found out the last time we did that, but every 55 minutes, something like that, you'd have to re-sign back in.
Okay.
Because of the guest Wi-Fi.
That would definitely be something, I mean, because of the connectivity.
Yeah. So you'd imagine for.
We can straighten out.
Two-hour meeting that we'd have, everybody's getting disconnected.
They must have a password.
There must be a.
Because they're working, they're working in there, you know, they got, they got offices in there, so they must, for sure they're not signing.
If we talk to those two people before they leave, you know, we're fine, yeah. Rick, what do you think?
Well, you know, again, as we talked when we met last, I mean, you know, number one, if you go with the premise that they are not burdensome, and they will operate smoothly, I think number one, it'll speed up the meeting, because it'll be much quicker. I think the second thing, clearly, we, first and foremost, regardless of which way, well, if we go with the clickers, then it's a moot point. If we don't, then obviously, on any two-thirds vote, we're going to just take account immediately. As we talked, I think in the first time we did it, you know, I was off by four votes on the two-thirds. The second time, which was the senior center question, the request, and rightly so, based on the seven people who, you know, approached the moderator, the recount was had, and in the meantime, people left, and then people voted, so it threw the count off again. So to me, clearly, you're going to get a better sense of transparency. You obviously have to work from the premise that the system will function as intended, that it's not going to run the, you know, run the town clerk into the dirt while, while we're trying to get it set up. I mean, I would be more inclined to support it simply because of efficiency, speed, and transparency. But if it's not, even if it's not available for this meeting, this is a special town meeting, I'm not aware of right now any questions, that would be two-thirds. But to me, the big thing is two-thirds, because two-thirds looks a lot different from where I stand to where, where we all stand and sit, to what.
It's going on.
It looks way different than a majority, and, you know, again, you know, great that I was off by three on one, and we had the change in the other, but me being off is still me being off, and that's not acceptable. So anything that, obviously, manual recount will preclude that, and clickers would have a much better chance with a cross-check. But again, if it's going to, it's going to create a lot for Eva, because Eva has a lot to do during the meeting. I mean, it really, what's happening up there, and you all know, what's happening up there is happening in real time, and it's fairly quick. And there's a lot of times where, you know, Eva might say even to me, hey, did you get that person's name? Do you remember who? So there's a lot that has to be recorded and dealt with, so if she suddenly, her attention is diverted from that type of thing, I think it's impractical. But again, it sounds like we had a quick conversation on the way up. They either love it or they hate it. There's no in-between ground here. But to me, if given, given the choice, if we could make it work, even if we rented it one time and gave it a chance.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to rent it one time and give it, try it.
I've watched some YouTube's town meetings, they seem to be pretty popular with the ones that, that make it happen.
Well, I think the other.
It speeds them up.
And well, that's, as I said, my feeling is it's going to do two things. It's going to speed it up, and it's going to improve transparency. The other thing, and, you know, you don't have to have been around for a long time, go back to the 50s or whatever. You know, it's always the age-old thing, when the fire department comes in, and the police department comes in, or the school budget comes up, nobody wants to be the one to raise their hand, no. Now, does that take away some of the mob mentality voting? It's probably got a shot at doing it. And if it makes people feel more comfortable about coming, I mean, the whole goal is to get more people in the room. But at the same time, we've had a lot of conversation about making it more transparent and speeding up the process, so that everybody is able to attend, and also they're able to be a part of it. So. So I would, I'd be inclined to give it a shot, but I'd like to see, you know, what Eva ends up with.
Well, I'd like to see the rental price. And I think, Don, if it's low enough, we could even take it out of selectmen expenses, you know, if it's in the couple thousand range.
And then do we have to factor in another person to run the system?
Sure.
One of the things that you asked was, did it improve attendance? And nobody felt that it had improved attendance. The one thing that was, I guess, the big hit was it was, you could vote secretly. Nobody had to know how you voted. That was the, that seemed to be the biggest hit with that. And as I say, some people were all for it and others just didn't feel it was worth the effort.
Do they come with screens too, so people see?
That's, it's projected.
It's projected.
One article would be projected on the screen itself.
But you don't, you don't see how the vote is going.
No, no.
You only see how many people voted.
That's what I understand it comes, you see it as this and then you get the total.
Right.
And obviously, the other thing that's gonna speed it up, and again, this is chump change time because we don't have a lot of two-thirds votes. But theoretically, it's doing the calculation on the fly instead of a hand count and then me standing there with a calculator doing the math.
Yeah, that's how I've seen it on the, like I say, watching the other town meetings.
Six years a minute, Chuck, I mean, math is a trick.
Should've stayed for that one. Should've stayed for the last year.
Yeah, I made it. Bar was pretty low back then.
Why are you here also? Were you ever talking about starting at 6:30? Your thought on that?
Fine with that. I think that most people might, you know, we had some, there was a lot in what you had sent and have done a lot of homework on it already. We don't have to beat that to death again. But, you know, I don't think starting earlier is gonna hurt our cause. And, you know, plus folks with, you know, kids or that type of thing, they can get them through that window and get them all. But I mean, I don't know if you can do it
For the, for the special
Especially you can do what you want and you need to
Do it till we try it out.
Have to vote, right? That's fine. I'm game for either one of those. Anything that gets more people in the chairs and speeds up the process, I'm good.
So there was a, there was a quote for a rental of 200 clickers. So to rent 200 clicker, it says it's $2,495 plus round-trip shipping. And it says if you want our staff to attend the rental and operate the system, the cost is $5,495. And you can rent more clickers for $10 a clicker.
Make it
Plus round-trip shipping.
That would be a pretty expensive special town meeting. But that's your call. I get to sit on the sideline for now.
It's a little rental, 2, 2,500 plus.
Right. Five grand for lemon if you buy it.
Well, if we
You buy it, you get it for 10 grand and somebody shows up for free, should I have to use it? So I don't know. Think about the math.
One of the other things that's related that's come up is the community compact grants. There's an IT grant that's gonna be available in January that could, in theory, cover the cost.
The only thing I can't figure out is, is, let's say you buy 250, or we buy 250 clickers. What happens if 300 people show up?
They can't use them.
You gotta anticipate what the crowd could be.
You really couldn't, because, I mean, theoretically, the one thing that, the underlying current of everything I read is, it's gotta be consistent and equal throughout the entire process. Literally like, and again, not to believe it, Mike, because you have other folks here. But if we set up a separate room, like we've had to do with high school voters and that type of thing, as soon as you set it up, the folks in the next room have to have every bit the same as the folks sitting there. The exception of they don't get to visually see the person. We've gotta have, you know, we've gotta have television.
Phone and the whole
We have to have an extra moderator. So I'm just saying, if you ran out of clickers one night because we had a huge vote or we didn't anticipate, the clicker system would sit on the sidelines and we'd go back to manual.
I said before, is there a possibility of reaching out to other towns that might have a system that we could partner up with?
That's one of the things I was gonna suggest, I'm sorry. One of the things, I've, again, talked to a couple of people too. If there are other communities that are local and they have the same clickers, again, you have to anticipate what the crowd is gonna be like. Hey, just run over and say, hey, we need your clickers tonight. But if you have some idea that you're gonna exceed your 200 clickers or whatever, you may be able to work a deal with a community that's close enough that you can pick them up and borrow them and
Alright, so what I can do tomorrow is I'll kick out an email to the Mass Moderators Association, quote unquote, the gavel line, and I'll ask them how many towns use them. And we're looking to experiment with them. If such a thing is possible, would somebody be willing to let us borrow even for a fee? And see, because the moderators really aren't in charge of this, but I mean, I can see what the town, they could at least go ask the question. And usually if I send something to them, I get 15 responses within four hours.
Sure.
So I'll send it out tomorrow.
Because we gotta make a decision pretty quick here.
I'll get it out tomorrow and I'll, whatever I get back by, say, Wednesday afternoon, I'll email, I'll email the results.
Okay. You might hear from Hopkinton, hey, we'll rent you 400 for $1,000. Great, whatever.
Like I said, I hear from everybody when I send those things out. So I'll get it out tomorrow, we'll see where we land.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
I'm good, great.
And you're okay with the 6:30 thing if the board goes that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Good to know.
That's fine.
And were you swamped with the early voting today?
We had nine people Saturday. And we didn't have anyone afternoon time. And that's only because Kathy texted people and said, hey, come down and vote from here. Nine people. Nine to five.
Okay.
Time well spent.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, you guys, thanks.
Thornton versus lease update, you wanna give the lease update?
We'll amend it.
Amend it.
The school committee meeting last week, the school committee voted six to one to enter into negotiations with the Hamden for selectmen to amend the lease with the goal of, along with a couple other ancillary provisions, to return possession of the school to the Towneham by June 30th, 2025. Did I cover it?
Yes.
I'll be working with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, town council to get that underprepared, complete in time for the September 19th school committee meeting, which is at TWB. Alright, we're gonna send off.
Okay. Community compact grants.
So I'd sent out this letter that the state sends out informing the town about compact grants.
Two that really
Stuck out to me were the, they're on the back of the sheet, the IT grant program and then the municipal fiber grant program. Come back around if additional costs that the fiber committee can think of. We've closed out that grant this past year so that we should be eligible again for fiber grant program. IT grant program, ideas could be the electronic voting systems or I'm sure there's gonna be IT upgrades that are gonna need to happen at TWB as well, so.
I think we, Don, didn't we get that two or three years ago?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We did.
Yeah.
Is applying for one limit you on the next one or is there a chance to be ordered both?
I, I think these programs are pretty siloed. Are you talking about in the same year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're pretty siloed.
I think we got at least two of these.
And what's the cap of the grant?
Was that the last thing Mary did or something? She go along these or something?
I think the fibers are two fifty.
The IT's supposed to be that or?
I feel like the IT, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it's less than that. So
Yeah, let's do them, let's do them both.
Yep, right.
Not anything immediate, but that we have is up there.
One, two, three.
Ideas.
Conservation commission vacancies, we have two vacancies on the conservation commission. Andrew Netherwood wants to stay on as an associate. There's a gentleman that came to the conservation commission meeting last week and Bonnie has given him all the information and everything about it. The other gentleman didn't show up, so it's an important, one of the most important committees in the town because they have a lot of work to do. And if anyone's environmentally interested or climate change or wetlands or any of that, please contact the town administrator. All I got to say. Got any ideas on that?
Well, I think we saw a lot of people involved and concerned about the Glendale Road thing. We'd like to know, you know, but it's broader, it's every part of town. Take that and bring it in. Graham, what's also happening with the other vacancies? I had a contact from a funeral home concerned about outreach to cemetery and really wondering if they're gonna get a clerk there.
The last conversation I had was with Dwayne and they were willing to consider a clerk, but not currently.
Well, what's the issue? Why wouldn't they want to?
I mean, it's budgeted, why not?
Why wouldn't you want to help? Somebody answer the phone.
I didn't ask that specific question. Sometimes if you have help, you sort of lose control of stuff. But I don't know if that's the case or not.
Well
How about the assistant too? Did it work out for planning with the assistant? Or was it Rose?
Yep, yep. Yep, Joanne's had basically the temporary help.
The cannon. Do we have that? Can you bring that up on the screen?
Yeah. And I can't.
Did you bring your guest receipt?
Go to lunch when you're there too?
No, no. It was election day up there, they were in a primary day in Vermont and they were in a frenzy. So the story with the cannon, as we all know, is that back in the 1970s, a police officer was chasing a suspect through the woods of the Glendale Road area and tripped over the cannon. And he went back unbeknownst to the landowner and with a tow truck and took the cannon off, off the landowner's land.
Well, that's in the interest of safety, I'm sure, right?
Yeah. And he had it in his, he had it for a little while here, but then he moved to Vermont and took the cannon with him. This is, so this is the 70s, this is, and he, every 4th of July, as I'm told up there, that he would shoot the cannon off. And then in 2003, he was ill and he bequeathed the cannon to the town of West Windsor, Vermont, also known as Brownsville. And they have had it in the front of their town hall for lowly as many years until 2023, when they decided they didn't want it there anymore. Two reasons, I guess, one because it's kind of rusty and the other reason is some of the town residents were concerned it was too militaristic and they wanted to have a more pacifist feeling about the town. So they called us up and said, we got your cannon. You want it back? So I went up there. I think it was, the thing is that there's a group of people, Civil War group, that is trying to identify exactly what cannon is. They believe it's actually a naval cannon. And the case on it's on was built by the person who found the cannon. And a naval cannon probably would be too bad because we do have the Scannick and if any, if any British ships or pirates try to come up the Scannick to loot the town, we would have the cannon to defend ourselves. So the question is, we want to get the cannon back down here. It looks like it needs to be restored. It might be fun to have.
I think it'd be fun to have. Something for
I don't know, why don't you ask the VFW if they want to do it?
Yeah, I think we should do it. Something for the 150.
We should actually, we should actually try to
But I mean, the providence is it's a naval cannon, it's got no link to the town.
It does have a link, because
Well, they think it's a naval cannon.
Yeah. It actually could have come from Boston when, was it Henry Knox?
Henry Knox, he could have took it from before. Before Tycondroga.
And they used to use, from what I was researching, they used to use old cannons as property markers.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe that's what it was.
So no, that guy in Glendale doesn't know where his line is?
He probably never knew where it was to begin with.
And which is why we have to pre-ambulate the town.
That'll be
I mean, could highway departments throw it on their thing where they have their Kubota tractor on it?
To flap it?
Get down here? Flap it, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I guess we should ask Mark while he was here.
No, I didn't think of it. Any, so
Alright, I think it's a good idea. Like I say, we have $20,000 in the 150 account.
Right.
So we need to spend a couple hundred bucks to go pick it up? Sure.
Alright, good. Done.
Aye.
Where's the other picture? You got the other picture up there, the other side of it?
We put it on the common over here, right?
There it is, yeah.
Maybe a blacksmith make a, make a sign for it.
Great. Okay, another, another weighty decision.
Yeah.
Alright, correspondence. We have our great horse people here. Attorney Attorney
Rachel Fancy.
Guy?
Yep.
Okay. So we've got, we received a letter from Fitzgerald Law Firm and on behalf of the great horse. And they're asking to have a zone change, to change what, 128 Wilberham Road, which is basically our four and our six to
231
208 exists. Oh, 231 Wilberham Road.
There are parcels that are around it that don't actually have a property address. They just have parcel ID's.
Is it parcel ID?
Okay.
The old Ketti Farm. And they want to change the R4 and R6 to Gulf Recreational.
Correct.
Okay? So I guess the first part of this is the selectmen's only obligation here is to pass it on to the planning board within 14 days. That's it. That's their obligation by law, right? It's Chapter 48, Section 5?
Yep.
Okay. The other, the other question they have is the, the selectmen create the warrant, so would we put the question, the zone change, on the warrant? On that, I think we have to wait to see what the planning board decides to do. They have 65 days to have a hearing. I don't know what their business, what their schedule is. My calculations are that if we gave it to them on Wednesday when they meet, 65 days, if they wait the whole 65 days, you'll still be short by a few days before town meeting. Because the town meeting is the 30th, uh, 29th of October. So I would think we would want to send it over to planning and then hear from them what their schedule is when they conduct a hearing and then we can make a decision whether to put it on or not.
So basically, we're not against it, we're not for, basically the ball's in planning's court.
Right now, yeah.
Right.
We send it over to them.
We can refer it.
We will refer it to them.
Is the land currently 61A or 61B?
A.
So I guess the question we would have is, so it doesn't need to be approved by planning board, it just needs to have a recommendation, correct? And so
Yep.
The concern you have is putting it on the warrant, not knowing if they would make any recommendation in time?
Yeah, my concern is, I don't know what their schedule is, the hearings and things like that. So whether they would be able to get the hearing done and make a recommendation in time for the town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. What would be the downside to, and this is honestly a, a question that you could probably answer better than us, but have it on the warrant. I guess, and you know this, but great horses, the, um, largest taxpayer, largest employer, and I think maybe the largest landowner in town, um, making a reasonable request for, um, to save. Otherwise, we'll have to go get a hundred signatures.
We could do that.
Which we prefer not to do, basically. So if it goes on the warrant and for some reason there is a meeting on September twenty-fifth?
September twenty-fifth is what we're trying to work out.
If for some reason they can't make a recommendation or just exercise the entire sixty-five days, there's two questions. There's one, can it still be voted on, um, by that town meeting, absent that recommendation? But also, yeah, what is, what if it's on the warrant without the recommendation? What's the downside?
You mean, take no action at that point? I mean, potentially take no action?
Correct.
So put a placeholder on no matter what?
That, that would be our request because, again, I think it's important, it's important to great horse, but I think absent it being referred by the select board, we'd have to go collect signatures, which we feel like we could get, but it's a lot of time and energy. And we'd be in the same situation. Well, if the planning board does not.
Are you saying, excuse me, are you saying that the planning board is going to hold a hearing the twenty-fifth?
They're having a September twenty-fifth hearing. I've been in contact, uh, with Joanne and she has basically said she can try and work it out. She can't make any guarantees, so, or hopeful. She, part of the reason we wanted to come today is because she needs to send out notice on her end by the twenty-eighth, which is obviously Wednesday. So if that's going to happen, obviously things need to cascade. She doesn't need notice to be posted until I think the fifth.
But we haven't referred it to them yet.
Yes, I've just been in contact if it was possible. If it wasn't potentially possible, obviously we might not be here today.
Yeah, they're going to put, they're going to, they're going to give fourteen day notice.
Sounds like a bit of that French thing, after you guessed, no, after you guessed. You know, like, are we waiting on them or are they waiting on us?
We can make it simple. Just, I'll, I'll make a motion to refer the zoning petition to the planning board for public hearing.
Having been on the planning board for several of these rezonings, it's always been the planning board call. If they can get it done in time?
Yeah, well, we got to refer it to them first.
I agree.
Okay, fine. We're going to refer it to them tomorrow. Okay. So now the question is, if they can schedule, we have another meeting on the ninth. We can always vote to put it on the warrant on the ninth if they can get it, if they think they can get it scheduled. No, no, September ninth.
We're not, we said we weren't going to close the warrant until September thirtieth, so we have to.
Right. So if we hear officially that the planning is going to schedule the public hearing for the twenty-fifth, then that gives us all the reasons to say, sure, well, there's a warrant article. Because they're doing it.
Yeah.
Right.
I just have a timing question. If, um, they, we don't get on the September twenty-fifth meeting, but we get the hundred signatures.
Then, then by law, we have to go, we have to put it on.
So, but we'd have to have a hundred signatures by September thirtieth.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, I think the board of registrars has to certify them.
Yeah, the board of registrars has to certify. So you got to get it in a few days before the, you know, it only takes them a couple of days to do it. So that's what you want to do.
I think that's a, we appreciate, I think it's a reasonable path. It sounds like there's a willingness to, if it gets scheduled, planning board to, at the next meeting, refer it to the, uh, warrant without having to gather the signatures.
Okay.
I really appreciate that.
Is it inappropriate to ask why?
It's not an inappropriate task. Uh, I, they want the zone change.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, it's for the potential expansion of the golf course use on the properties while also keeping, um, the allowed farming use. The immediate next step is, the, the primary goal is to move the maintenance shed off of Wilbraham Road.
Oh, yeah.
But despite, um, guys' best efforts, you can only beautify the even test. And, um, because it's an accessory use to golf course.
I think those pink ribbons you put on were nice.
No, no, the roof is too noisy. I banged a few off the top of that roof.
There's space on the farm, but because it's, the underlying zoning is, is residential, it's golf course accessories, it can't be relocated absent this rezoning. So that, that's the immediate short-term goal. And then that would, it would also allow for, it's essentially a five hundred and thirty-plus acre parcel bisected by Raymond Drive. If it's all consistent use, it would allow, you know, in the future, potential, um, golf course expansion if, if that was desired. What it would foreclose though, and, and, um, great horses wanting to give up this right in order to allow, for that, it would foreclose the ability to do residential development on that large parcel. So it would be a trade-off. It would allow for golf course potential expansion in the long term, near term, immediate relocation of the storage shed, and then they would be giving up the ability to, to do residential redevelopment of that significant acreage, which we view as a form of, I know golf course isn't official conservation, but it's, um, it conserves the land undeveloped for only a farm or golf course use.
All right, that's the plan. See what they're going to do and let us know while they let us know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I hope you learned a lot about what's going on in town.
I learned what you keep in the warrants.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have a second letter from, uh, the planning board, which is incomprehensible to me. So apparently the, uh, one of the planning board members was speaking to the zoning enforcement officer and they disagree with the attorney's position that we should hold a public hearing. And apparently he's advocating on behalf of the self-storage people to not have, not charge them to hold, if we, if they hold a public hearing, not charge them, but for the town to pay for notifying their butters and paying for the advertisement. This is clearly a planning board issue too, and they should talk to the town attorney about it.
Yeah, I don't see, we don't have a.
I, I don't understand his continued advocacy for the self-storage, but that's an issue for another day and another election.
Okay.
All right, selectmen's reports.
Okay, uh, there's a meeting of the Senior Center Building Committee on Thursday at the police station where we hold our Thursday meetings because the Senior Center is too busy on Thursdays and the building, and the room is not available. I've been asked to clarify for the meeting. I believe I heard, yes, the select board, or board of selectmen for right now, is in favor of bringing the article forward in the fall, correct? They're not going to require a hundred signatures for a.
Well, I don't know. They're out, they're out gathering the signatures now, so they might as well continue their good work.
We agreed on it.
I thought we agreed to, it could be on the warrant.
We did, and I'm a little, I'm a, but I'm a little bit.
People have different opinions and.
No, no, not different opinion. They're going around town saying the selectmen aren't going to put it on the warrant, so therefore we have to get signatures, and that's not true.
I agree. That's why I want to clarify.
And that's why they're going to run into problems again.
Anyhow, I appreciate, thank you for saying that.
You know, and, uh, you know, they were at the church this weekend and, you know, it's just inaccurate and I don't understand. I don't understand that.
That Girl Scout thing, circle around and.
You know, I don't, I don't understand.
Planning board, there's a meeting on this Wednesday, a couple of home occupation. And I believe the other thing was, nothing relative to us per se, hung out in home occupation near Craig. So, but they'll stay away.
Uh, fiber act, the committee is meeting on Wednesday and they may have some updates coming soon.
Quick, quick update. I mean, I saw the result. So you couldn't find any ferns.
That's what Brian did.
So what happens now?
John?
I have not been reported to yet on that resort.
Okay.
That survey. Brian, did you get any from there?
Yeah, you were a C C dot E mail. Keep that first. No ferns.
No ferns.
No ferns. Uh, late this afternoon.
Okay, that's right.
So now they can move forward?
Now we can proceed to a point.
So now Conservation will issue a order of conditions for the project.
Hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to get to the bidding process, but we're still waiting for the state to determine whether or not we're eligible for any kind of reimbursement.
Right, we'll hear about the one-stop grant. It says in September, in September, that will, that will dictate how many phases I put out to bid.
Yeah, because there's a possibility they could cover more than we asked for.
I got to.
I think they might be rehearsing for.
Okay. What? The administrative report.
Garvey v. Hampden, attorney filed the motion for clarification of the, of the, of the order on the twenty-first of August. So we'll wait to hear back. He thought there was going to be a hearing scheduled in that case. New website. We've had our first meeting with the project designer and we have a small group that's going to go together and go through that process. E V Chargers, um, we learned that National Grid was doing some work out there this weekend. But when I reached out to the, uh, the project engineers, it sounds like they may have moved it out there, but nothing's hooked up yet. So that's still, uh, going forward and I was promised a, a project schedule in the next couple of days. And part of that will need to be, uh, decisions by the board about rates and fees and things like that.
Two dollars.
And then training on the, on the, the system. Time bonds, uh, still doing the conditions assessment for T W B. And part of that is also going to be a spatial planning analysis, which I think is, has even more importance now that we're moving this forward. I reached out to set up a meeting with, with their, uh, staff person there. Hopefully they're really close to it sometime after Labor Day. And then I was going to update the water, uh, the water situation, Scanty Valley Water District. No ferns, but we had the, the climbing fern study done and nothing was found. So Conservation Commission can order the order of conditions. Uh, we already have the, the permission from Mass D P to modify the system. So really, we're, we're just holding out on that one-stop grant application, which we should hear in September. And then we can, depending on how that goes, we'll have to, we can put the project out to bid. So we should be looking sometime, uh, sometime in October, probably at the latest, trying to get that out to bid in whatever form that's going to take. That's it.
Brian, also, uh, the meeting at Green Meadows?
Oh, yeah, we had, oh, we had a, a, a short-term, uh, short notification that they were doing a capital walkthrough at Green Meadows. And John and I went and they were talking about the, the capital needs that they were discussing were, were interior, exterior doors, um, some flooring. At least those are the immediate needs, I think, John, right? And then longer term, I think they had F Y twenty-eight for roofwork. I have a much larger price tag. What was that? Seven figures, right?
Yeah.
I think.
I think the big thing was they were concerned about the safety of outside doors and also safety concerns for the fact that the keying structure for the internal doors was not consistent. And they wondered if there would be an opportunity to come to the Fall Town meeting to get money to fix them from a capital standpoint. I think we expressed to them that the Fall Town meeting is emergency use only. And in my opinion, if they can't get the work done before the annual town meeting, don't come to the Fall Town meeting. Because if you're such a thing, you come in, oh, my gosh, I got to fix these doors right away and we're going to schedule for the summer, then come to the spring meeting. Because obviously then it's not such an emergency. Because my thing to them, you got to, but if you're saying, my gosh, you give us that money, we're getting it done over Christmas and because the doors are falling apart and somebody could walk in, that's the case you need to make.
Well, what's the cost of the door replacements?
Uh, they could be talking in the forty to fifty range. You know, the headers are gone on the outside doors. The door can be fine, but it can be, because the header has been drilled so many times, the door could be pulled open with a good pull.
Exterior doors?
Yes. Especially with, I mean, your Jeep, I mean, shoot, you put a rope on that thing, it could be in a, in a heartbeat. Not my Ford.
Who needs a rope?
It would be a, be a pretty flimsy door for my Ford to do it. Anyhow, that was the report on, to them, and they've got to prove the case, basically. And they got, I think the board's been consistent with how we're looking at appropriations for the Fall Town meeting for money. I know, Craig, you made the point before, and I think we've agreed that, yeah, things happen in the fall that need to be addressed more so, but you do have to say, the reason we're asking for it in the fall is because we're going to spend it right away and we need it right now. Otherwise, yeah, otherwise.
Yeah, but that's inconsistent with the senior center then.
Well, I think that's not inconsistent because they've made a good point that the quicker you do it, the sooner you lock in the price. I mean, I'm sure the water district has a concern that the longer that project goes out, we've seen a, a rise in PVC pipe costs, that type of thing as well.
I, I just don't buy it. I think they're laser focused on something they want and they're not considering the rest of the town.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, David.